All right, good afternoon, good evening. It is now six o'clock, I'll call tonight's school board meeting to order. Tracy has taken roll call and we'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, next up is to review, revise, and approve tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written? Moved by trustee Wake, second by vice chair Walker Andrews. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none. All those in favor for approving the agenda as written, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up are to approve the minutes for the board regular meeting of June 24, 2025. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee Hayes. Any public comment on this agenda item? All those in favor for approving those minutes, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is item five, which is to interview applicants for school board vacancy. Can Leslie McShane and Rod Sharkey please come to the speaker? Oh, one at a time. Sorry, they have you together in my little... and, let's put an "and." Okay. Let's first do with Leslie. So, please come up to the speaker and you can turn it on and we will be asking you the same questions that we ask both of you. Thank you, Tracy.
Great, thanks. You're welcome. The last time I had an interview was in a small closet.
All right, so I'll ask the first question, which is, please tell us why you want to be a member of MCPS Board of Trustees and what uniquely qualifies you to be a member?
I, as I said in my application materials, I am a big fan of public education, from beginning through high school and obviously through Montana's university system, which I also mentioned for my own daughter. This, it's not an easy job by any stretch. I think that the challenges to be faced between budgetary issues and community issues and community differences are challenging and they're difficult, but I think that as a community voice and someone willing to give the time and energy to take this on, I would like to be considered.
All right. Does anybody else want to ask the second question? Oh, the "I" have them? Sorry, I've been on travel, so I'm all over the place. I'll just continue to ask them.
It's okay.
So, the second question is, what is your understanding of your role as an individual trustee and what are you part, where you are a part of an 11-member board?
Obviously, there are meetings to be attended, there are school matters to be learned and addressed, and to get to know the other members of the board, to get to know the administrators in the school department, and to work within that framework to contribute as I can. It's, can you, I'm sorry, this is really daunting. Can you...
Repeat it?
Yeah.
What is your understanding of your role as an individual trustee where you are a part of an 11-board member, 11-member board?
As I mentioned in the application process, the board process is for policy, it is for guidance, it is for budgetary concerns, and to be part of that decision-making process while also just reaching out within the community to see what issues are important to community members and participating and bringing some of those thoughts and issues to the table.
All right, thank you. The third question is, how do you see your role as a high school trustee representing partner schools to MCPS? So, our feeder schools.
Say, as a high school trustee, and what about the feeder schools?
How do you see your role with those schools? Representing, as a representing partner for MCPS within those feeder schools, partner schools?
Getting to know the schools, getting to know the administration, getting to know those schools' concerns, and working as well with the high school, Big Sky obviously, and other schools that may have issues that are important to the community in terms of how our high schools are run and what the needs of the community might be.
Okay, so those are our three questions and we'll go ahead and switch places with Rod and then we'll open it up for discussion after we interview him. Thank you. Hi. So, I'll ask you the three same questions I did the previous candidate. Please tell us why you want to be a member of the MCPS Board of Trustees and what uniquely qualifies you to be a member?
Well, I've always been, as a lifelong Missoulian, a product of a public education in MCPS, from kindergarten all the way through college. Education's always been extremely important to me. I've served the past 12 years on the, as a trustee for school district number four, which is Helgate Elementary, the district that I would be representing. I have a child who is actively involved at Big Sky and it's important to me, as a parent, to be involved in the education process. I've been involved with both my kids the entire time that they were going to school, so, yeah, it's, I feel that I'm uniquely qualified inasmuch as I have served 12 years as a school trustee already, and I'm intimately involved with the Helgate Elementary School System, which is the largest feeder school to the district, so.
All right. For the second question, what is your understanding of your role as an individual trustee where you are part of an 11-member board?
As a board of trustee, as a trustee for the school district, I am but one voice amongst the 11. To me, it's important that we have civil discussion amongst the group to help in the budgetary direction, policy setting for the district. That being said, the day-to-day operation of the district should be handled by the administrators, by the superintendent. As an advisory board is what the board of trustees should be, and as a trustee, you can't make individual decisions. It is governing by consensus, which, to me, that means civil conversation. I mean, you and I may not always agree with everybody else in the room, you may be voted down at times, but even when that occurs, civility must reign, so.
All right, and for the third question, how do you see your role as a high school trustee representing partner schools to MCPS?
I began to touch on that already. Again, Helgate Elementary is one of the largest, that's the district in which I reside and the district which I've represented for 12 years. I'm intimately involved with all the administration and all of the teachers, all the classified, as well as certified individuals at that school. I know what the taxpayers for that district are looking for, and, you know, that being said, for the other parts of the district, for the other schools, say DeSchmidt or any of the other schools' target range, I know what's going on at those schools because I've made it a point to keep involved with that over the last 12 years. So, I think, again, I'm gonna do the same thing. Can you repeat the question? I feel like I'm rambling.
Yep, no, totally fine. How do you see your role as a high school trustee representing partner schools to MCPS?
You're one of, you're one of a group of 11 that's here to help guide the policies, the budget, and it's a position of consensus, it's not a position, it's not an individual mandate.
Okay, thank you very much. So, now we'll go ahead and open the floor for trustee discussion. Any particular questions, any comments from individual trustee? Trustee Wake?
I'd just like to thank the candidates for coming and submitting their names. It's hard to be on the board and I think that it's important that you're showing interest in the fact that you're sitting here tonight saying that I would like to serve on the board. So, thank you very much for applying.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews?
Rather than having a question, I wanted to know if either of you had questions for
This might be your only chance. Can you use the mic just because we're being recorded? Thank you.
I think as an outsider, the feeder school question was a little bit challenging in terms of understanding exactly how the board is structured and how that position works with the 11-member board. And so, if that could be explained, I'd really appreciate it.
I'll say, I officially represent the schools from, the kids from Target Range and from Bonner, which may seem odd to you, it does to me, just because they're so far apart. And I think the main thing is to just try to be cognizant of the issues for people in those communities and make sure that what we're discussing overall for the high schools still represents their needs and values. But like I said, it's, I live in Target Range, so I spend a lot more time, whether I like it or not, talking to the Target Range people, and so I find that a little difficult. I don't see that there's ever been big problems, but one of the things that I thought was very interesting recently is when we had the ability for people to give money for the innovative tax write-offs, and every school district was trying to get that money, including Bonner and Target Range and MCPS, and that's a funny thing that puts us in a little bit of competition with one another, and so that can be kind of a strange situation I'll just say one more thing. So, we have a representative from Lolo and Wake, and then Helgate, Target Range, Bonner, and Seeley Swan? Is that all? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, how did Seeley Swan end up in the mix?
Missoula County.
I know, I get that, but there's a lot of schools in Missoula County, and just the high school, I just, that's a matter of personal curiosity.
Yeah, it's a long story and it goes back to 1964. It had a lot to do with state government and the approval of new high school districts and then being able to fund. Kids in Seeley and Augusta used to go to Lincoln and there was a whole bunch of stuff going on, but they basically petitioned and got the law changed to become a part of Missoula County Public Schools.
All right, any other trustees have an individual question or comment for any of our candidates? Trustee Walsh?
I, I'm just wondering, it's really helpful when board members have daytime availability. Do either of you have much daytime availability to go visit schools and meet up for meetings,
It's the best paying job. You got it. Okay. I'm willing to entertain a motion from a trustee for any candidate, any, however, I'm open to a motion, if anybody wants to take a motion?
Do you like to know my date of coming to the...
Oh, okay, sorry.
Having worked in the nonprofit field for eight, seven, eight years, it's a little bit like Hotel California. You really don't quite ever leave. My job got posted and it took us seven months to find a replacement, and I still am working in a very part-time basis, as I explained in the materials, but I do have daytime availability and great flexibility beyond a couple of morning shifts at the food bank, which are set shifts, but beyond that, yes, I have a good amount of daytime availability.
Can I make a motion? I motion to accept Leslie McShane as a trustee.
Is there a second? Second by trustee Walsh. All right, any final trustee comments? I have a comment. I just want to thank you both for applying as well. As we've seen, when it comes to voting for safety levies or any levies in general or funding for our public schools, it's really important to have our partners, especially the high school trustees, because that's the one that failed, and I think this is a really critical time for public education. So, I just think that's really awesome that you both stepped up, and so we'll go ahead and move on to the vote. Any other final comments though, before I move on? All right, all those in favor for the mo... oh, trustee Walsh?
Well, I just, you know, I'd like to have them both. They are both great candidates and I'm so grateful for them to come here tonight.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor for the motion on the table, please indicate yes by raising your hand. For trustee Mercer, trustee Walsh, trustee Hayes, trustee Old Person, vice chair Walker Andrews, yes. Those opposed, trustee Wake, motion passes. Welcome trustee McShane. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to our clerk, Denise Williams, to go ahead and move forward. Thank you so much, Mr. Sharkey. Appreciate it.
All right, now we have our new trustee seated, welcome. So next up is item six, which is public comments. So the public comment portion of the meeting is set aside for the public to address the board as a body. It is not time for board response or the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on right of privacy of others, please sign in as well your first and last name. Comments are limited, three minutes per speaker. The chair or acting chairman may interrupt or terminate. An individual speaker of statements are out of order. Over three minutes are personally directed to an individual. Any public comments? CNN. I'll go ahead and move forward to reports and announcements and turn it over to Superintendent Hill.
Well, I don't have, usually have very many important announcements, but we're continuing to work through hiring and enrollment in the summertime. As can be evidenced by our board packet tonight, there is a lot of hiring and movement in the district. And especially when you only have one meeting in, in the month, you're apt to see a little bit more of that. And so we're just continuing that, down that road. But we're getting some great candidates and getting most of our positions filled, so feeling really good about that. And then enrollment, mostly steady, I would say, but we are about fifty kids down in kindergarten from where we were last year. So we have about four hundred thirty kindergarten students, but on the upside of that, we have almost two hundred early literacy students. So we're continuing to see some enrollments come in that way, too. So we're just continuing to monitor that situation. We're starting some of the leveling processes in our elementary schools and middle school, and we'll just keep going from there. So those are my announcements for July fifteenth.
All right. Next up is item eight, which is the consent agenda. There is, there will be no board discussion as these are routine items. Is there, we'll have two, an elementary and a high school motion. So is there an elementary board motion to approve the consent agenda items there? Moved by trustee Hayes. Second by trustee Walsh. There is no board discussion, any public comment on this item? CNN. All trustees in favor for approving? Oh. Yes.
It says teacher's gradebook. Eight twenty seventeen to the six twenty seventeen.
If.
You follow the schedule according to what state law?
No, no, it says eight twenty seventeen to six twenty seventeen. Is that on the form?
Yeah, I think we got it here wrong.
Yeah. I just want to share with you. It says thirteen above and twenty seventeen. And the year of living on August. And then the bubble is six twenty.
It's right at the bottom, teacher gradebooks. Two thousand thirteen.
Eight twenty seventeen.
No, everything else is twenty seventeen.
We're going backwards, we're going back in time.
Oh.
Is this about the year from the central high school?
I, I think it's a title. I, I think it should, I think they're all meant to say eight twenty thirteen. I think it's.
I know, but I just want to make sure that we have the right member on here. National, we need the naturally.
Okay, I'll, I'll make sure. Thank you.
All right, is, um. All those in favor for approving the elementary consent agenda items, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Next up is there a high school board motion to approve the consent agenda items? Moved by trustee Wake, second by vice chair Walker Andrews. There is no board discussion, any public comments? CNN, all those in favor for approving the high school consent agenda items, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. All right, next up is new business. And first up is to approve the Drummond School District Transportation Agreement, and I'll go ahead and turn it over to Denise Williams.
Thank you. This agreement is with the Drummond School District to allow them to enter into the M C P S. And I think another one, oh. It's two districts, it's for the high school district and the elementary district. It's just allowing them to run their school bus stop within our boundaries, just so, because it's a safe stop. And it's a requirement by law to have an agreement between the two districts. So we're allowing Drummond School District to have a best stop within our boundaries, that's what this is.
Any questions? Trustee Walsh.
Is this, did we approve the same one last year? Okay.
Routine. Any other questions? CNN, is there, is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by vice chair Walker Andrews. Second by trustee Walsh. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All those in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. All right, next up is to establish a bus depreciation reserve fund, and this is back to you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you. As you recall, we purchased some buses for the, in the twenty twenty five school year. We'll be purchasing some more, but for those ones we purchased last year, we now need to open a best depreciation reserve fund. And we need one for the elementary district and one for the high school district. So that's why you see two recommendations in front of you. And the purpose of these funds is to permissively levy to replace those buses when they go out of service and we need to have new ones.
Any questions from a trustee? CNN, so there'll be two motions. First up is an elementary motion. Is there a motion from an elementary trustee? Moved by trustee Hayes. Second by trustee Walsh. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comment? CNN, all elementary trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is there a high school motion to approve the recommendation? Moved by trustee Wake. Second by vice chair Walker Andrews. Any public comments? All trustees in favor of approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is to the establishment of enterprise fund for schoolhouse meets, and this is back to you, Ms. Williams.
Okay, thank you. This next one is just so that we can be in compliance with accounting standards. We do have that, the schoolhouse meets, a lot of people know it as Meat Lab. And the operations of that facility and those activities are, they're intended to meet the cost of running the lab. And we will be, and have been, marketing not just within the school district but outside. And so it's operated more like a business type activity. And accounting standards require us to report it in an enterprise fund. So I need board approval to open a new fund, which is called an enterprise fund.
Any trustee questions? Vice chair Walker Andrews.
Uh, not being a business person, I'd never heard of an enterprise fund in my entire life. It's just a name for a place to put any kind of sales dollars in so that we can account for them, that's it, really?
Absolutely, that's exactly what it is.
Okay.
Any other trustee questions? Trustee Mercer.
Is there any balance transfer or?
Yeah, there, if there, we probably have a few existing funds in the miscellaneous programs fund, and we'll transfer those over to the enterprise fund.
Any other trustee questions?
Six thirty-three P M.
Is there a motion from a high school trustee for the approval or for the recommendation? Moved by trustee Wake. Second by trustee Mercer. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All those in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is to the lease of space at Jefferson School by the Center of Restorative Youth Justice, and this is back to you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you. This is a standard agreement for leasing school property to, this one's for the Center of Restorative Justice. And they would like to lease space at our Jefferson School Building. And it would be from August first, twenty twenty five, to June thirtieth of twenty twenty six.
Any trustee questions? Trustee Hayes.
Can you let us know how much square footage they are leasing?
I, I can tell you that they're leasing the modular buildings behind the school. So, but I think they're eight hundred square feet roughly, so sixteen hundred square feet.
Thank you. Any other trustee questions? Trustee Walsh.
Are there still going to be any student programs at Jefferson next year?
Not at this time.
This is the elementary trustee motion. Is there a motion put forward for the recommendation? Moved by trustee Hayes. Second by trustee Walsh. Any final trustee comments? Any public comments? All those in, all elementary trustees in favor of approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is the federal government funding hold, and this is over to Superintendent Hill.
Thank you. Yeah, another fun discussion item in front of the board tonight. And I think most of you are aware of the, the federal funding hold. It's made national news, local news. And obviously, it's, the talking points around it are, are the impacts that it's going to have on schools, on students, on staff, families, communities. And the value and the importance of these funds in, in our day-to-day operations. And I've written out most of the information that I would have shared with you verbally, so I don't want to rehash all of it. But I think the, the important things to look at are what programs are being impacted by this and, and to what degree. Right now, the impacts that we're looking at, we use Title II for class size reduction. So we have five high school, or five F T E total, representing about two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars of funding that we receive annually. So that will affect three high school and two elementary school teachers for the district. So without those funds, that two hundred thirty-five thousand in, come August, or when these funds are due, and we're supposed to be paying out these salaries and benefits for these staff, we have nothing to, to do that with. And so we'd basically be saying, well, how are we going to get rid of three teachers, three high school teachers? And they are at Willard, who is currently coded to those, those dollars, and then two elementary teachers. I believe one's at Lewis and Clark and the other one is at Jeanette Rankin, is what I believe. So they're non-title schools, but they're to help reduce class sizes. Title IV Part A, well-rounded education, that salary has currently been used to pay for an instructional coach, so that's an F T E. So when we talk about instructional coaches and the impact to our district, they're usually a person that is helping all the people, all of our teachers, with their instructional practices, with making sure that we have programming, that we have curriculum, that we have resources, and support for those who are being asked to implement that. Title IV Part B is a, is a big one. Oh, I skipped over Title III, sorry. Twenty-five thousand dollars is, is basically what we receive annually from the federal government to educate English language learners. If you remember, I talked a little bit about, there was a bill in the state legislature that was going to be, for every one dollar you got of federal, we would get ten state dollars. That didn't materialize even after it was whittled down to, for every one dollar of federal, you get two dollars of state. So it really was not a lot of money for the district in, in total. But we have been using those funds to pay for one English language learning tutor. Title IV Part B is really our after-school programming. A few years ago, it was referred to as flagship. And there's about two hundred thirty thousand dollars that we pay the city parks and rec department to provide after-school programming. It's an all-or-nothing type of situation with the way that those funds are earmarked and how they have to be used. I put X X for the number of F T E that involves, but we're talking programming at Lowell, Franklin, Hawthorne, and some of that is Boys and Girls Club, some of it's city parks and rec. And so all of that together, we have about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in, in salary and benefits for the people that are involved in, in that. And then for this year, we've budgeted in excess of a million dollars, which is a combination of the delayed funding, which is nine hundred sixty-six thousand. And then we carry about a hundred thousand in carryover. So each year, you're allowed to carry over up to ten percent of whatever's budgeted. And you kind of refer to those as your rainy day funds, or you have an unexpected expenditure or something like that. And so if you incorporate the rainy day funds along with the, the funds that we were expecting, it's in excess of a million. And so the, what's remaining in those other expenditures, we pay for our state mandated assessment. So right now, you have to do the MAST test, which is the through-year assessment that everybody seems to love. That was a little bit of humor injected. Yeah, some people, some people, anyway, so you have that, but because it's not norm reference yet and because they don't have enough data, we also have to have other norm reference tests, so ExactPath, Early Bird. This is where we're paying for those additional testing items. Professional development for our teachers, teacher clarity, visible learning, all the things that we do professionally with our staff, a lot of the activities and things that we set up for. Our professional development day in February each year, it's paying for that. Culturally responsive materials, curriculum and books for programming like English language learners. So there's just a lot of, there's just a variety of, of impacts to our, our programming and, and what we offer. Our summer school staffing and supplies is, is paid for out of our title budgets, and then indirect costs. So we have to have someone who manages all of this. So anytime you talk about accounting for federal dollars, it is, one of Denise's most favorite pastimes is going into e-grants and these other grants and, and having to do all the, the auditing of and accounting for. But it's, it, it covers a lot of things, and so it's really impactful for our district. And it'll let being widely talked about. I know that there were twenty-six states and the District of Columbia that have essentially sued the federal government for releasing those funds since they were already allocated. Maybe even bigger concern is that they are not included in the next budget bill. And so that remains to be seen, if there's anything there. Our advocacy groups are talking to our state legislators, our local legislators, our national legislators, our representatives, those who have the ability to influence and hopefully bring about some change there. So looking at that and wanting to be a little bit more proactive, but there isn't a lot of time. One of the things, the recommendation is that I'm asking our trustees to set aside funds in the interlocal agreement for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year in the event that these funds are not distributed. And we will start running into payroll as early as September for the certified staff that are associated with that. So without those funds, then we'd have to be looking at somewhere else for that, and right now, we really don't have another source. We often look at the interlocal agreement as a, a place where we can, it's kind of a rainy day fund as well, where if there's unanticipated expenditures or different things that come up, we're, we're glad to have that. I worry about our, our districts and neighboring communities that don't have that and are also set to lose, you know, an equivalent amount of money for their districts and what that could potentially mean for them. So it would be a just-in-case. I, I remain optimistic that the funds will be released, but I can't predict with all the uncertainty.
Any questions? Trustee Hayes.
So has there been any discussion with O P I and what their plan is or what their thought is on all this?
Yeah, they've, they've sent out a number of communications. The most recent one was today, offering some guidance. And they put together some documents and different things for districts to look at. But basically, it was, don't assume that you're going to have these funds. Instead, think about other options or ways that you might be able to do this. And an example would be using your interlocal agreement as a, a means to do that. But it, it's really a, a matter of robbing Peter to pay Paul. If you're going to continue with these, you're going to have to be pulling from something else, because we have definitive budgets that are basically set by state law. Right now, I don't know that there's anything being discussed from a state level about additional appropriation, should these funds not be available. I would hope that whatever we discuss tonight, and if we are able to do this, that it would be the last resort for us to consider. And that if we were to be reimbursed, we would have a way to backfill the interlocal agreement with any fund to come in.
So it, is anybody going to go and testify in front of the Education Interim Committee that is meeting next week?
No, they just canceled that meeting.
Oh, they did? Okay. Thanks.
Any other trustee questions? Trustee Mercer.
So math question, on the top of page five, the last bullet point of the four, the seven hundred fifty thousand, I guess I got a little lost what that is. Is that an add-up of everything above, or is that something separate?
Yeah, that's an add-up of, so what, what you're seeing is just salary, but when you start to incorporate benefits. So in title, when you budget out a title, you have to budget the full cost of the employee. Whereas if it's out of general fund, things like retirement and T R S and work comp and all those things, you don't have to budget for it. It's really actually a very costly way to hire personnel is through title budgets because of the federal requirements for how you do it.
So the set aside, the recommendation then is for that million seventy-eight thousand, is that, or is it more general? And I guess, when you say set aside, what do you mean? Would there be a future vote, or is this it, you guys are authorized to spend it? What do you mean?
Yeah, so I was intentional about not putting a dollar amount in the recommendation, because ultimately, that's the board's role, is to set budgets and, and governance. You could say, hey, Micah, we see all of these things, we want you to, we're going to, we could authorize, someone could make a motion to authorize seven hundred fifty thousand, and then we would prioritize what comes off the plate and what would remain. Or you could say, we're, we're willing to authorize all of the expense. I just wanted to leave that open for discussion with the board.
Trustee Walsh.
I think the way the reimbursement works is we have to spend it to get reimbursed, right? So if we said only do five hundred thousand, then we would be leaving federal dollars on the table come reimbursement time. Like if we cut programs this year, instead of fronting the money, then we lose an opportunity to get, we could have had those programs. Does that make sense?
No, but when I was talking about the, like, being able to reimburse the, the interlocal agreement account, that I was just referring to. If, if, let's just say the funds aren't distributed until December. And, but we've, but knowing that we have to spend money to pay the people that are in the positions or to run the programs. But if the money does come in, then we would use that to reimburse the interlocal agreement account for the, the same amount, knowing that the funds are now restored.
Trustee Mercer.
So would you start pulling out of the interlocal right away? I mean, we have this, we're not going to run out of money until, you know, May or whatever, but would you just pay it out of general until there was a problem?
The intent would be to pay for it out of the interlocal agreement right away. Right.
Any other trustee questions? Vice chair Walker Andrews.
Sorry, just the discussion you just had, I found confusing, because we're saying we want to take it out of the interlocal. And I presume one of those reasons is what you mentioned about general fund and benefits, et cetera. So, yeah, we wouldn't want to do it out of the general fund, because we'd be paying for stuff that we wouldn't normally have to pay for out of the general fund. Yeah. Okay.
Trustee Wake.
Just so I'm clear in my head. We're going to borrow from the interlocal agreement so that we can cover the costs of what's not here on the table. Is there enough money in the interlocal agreement at this point to do this? Okay, so we're borrowing from ourselves and we'll pay back ourselves, correct? Okay.
If the federal funds come through.
Pardon me?
If the federal funds come through.
Well, we have to think positively and then worry about it next year.
Yes, we do.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and disperse these, this million dollars out of the interlocal agreement and with the caveat that we pay it back when we get the funding from the federal government. I'm thinking positively.
I, better to second and then ask? I guess I'll second it and then ask. Because Micah just said he didn't necessarily want us to say an exact amount. Are you saying this, this?
It doesn't exceed this amount.
Okay.
Not to exceed the amount that has been recommended.
Okay.
We have to have an amount to be recommended, so.
Right.
Or am I mistaken?
Can I clarify?
Yes, please.
Yep, so the budgeted amount is the million seventy-eight thousand four seventy-eight that I highlighted on the screen. The recommendation was to allow you the discretion to say all, some, none. I, I really wanted the board to be able to have that, the discretion, rather than me just coming forward with a recommendation. I might say something differently, or sometimes, so the amount in the interlocal agreement is around three million dollars. So we know we have the fund. Some of it's already earmarked or for expenditure for future use, for like curriculum purchases, different things like that. But we do have the money to do that. But I didn't want the board to feel uncomfortable about the amount of money that we're asking for, but again, remaining optimistic.
You don't want to put an, an actual money amount?
I, I want you to put an actual dollar amount on the, on the recommendation. I, I want you to put an actual dollar amount on the, on the recommendation. So-
So you want that, that dollar amount up there that you've recommended?
That's up to you to decide. I'm just telling you, this is the amount.
Well, cause that's what I included in my, my motion. So I just want to make sure we're all on the same page here.
Yeah.
Okay. I have another question though. That a million 78 is for all of those things you listed above it, but we haven't necessarily taken into account the, the state mandated professional development, blah, 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 right?
The million, the million 78, about 75% of that is salary and benefits. 25% of that is those things below.
Okay, okay.
Trustee Hayes and Trustee Mercer?
So we don't need to request the million 78, right? It's 966,405 because we have carryover of 112.
Correct.
Okay.
Let me highlight a new number.
Trustee Mercer?
So if this was borrowing, guaranteed borrowing, it would be obvious non-decision, but it might be spending this, a third of the remaining. The bulk of this money, maybe all of this money is elementary money. And yet again, we go to use it to spend it for high school. Now here in this, we also are using it for ongoing costs when it's a one-time only pool. It's all that there is. I will support this here. I vote for this. I hope it comes through. But if it doesn't, these will have to be cut or other things will have to be cut out of general budget. There is not, we are, we are getting to the point where the interlocal will not exist to back up. Like to me, one of its biggest benefits has been, we can be a little aggressive with our estimates because if we miss by a little bit, it's there to get our back. If it was just going to be, if we knew it was not going to be reimbursed, I think this would be a hard vote. I think there's hope. And again, most of this is for the elementary. So that makes me feel a little bit better. But I will just say this is transferring elementary money to the high schools again.
Trustee Walsh?
I guess this question might be a BIA question, but that lawsuit that's being brought, I think it's being brought in Rhode Island to the federal courts with the 26 states. If they win that case, we're covered by that win or be due to the Supreme Court taking away national injunctions? Are we, is it only the 24 states that would be covered for reimbursement?
Sir, is it if, if it were determined to not be a legal action, then every other state's going to get in on it. So right now with the, we can't have nationwide injunctions. Oddly enough, we're still sort of seeing them. But I would, I would say that if the, if there is a determination that this violates the law, they will apply it across the board to 50 states. Our, I would hope our state would get involved. We run the risk of our state saying, no, thank you. But I think, I think the feds at a national level will say, if we have made a mistake in all of these states, we'll fix it. Fingers crossed. But it will take some time. So.
All right. So there's a motion and it has been seconded. Any final comments? CNN, any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all trustees in favor for the recommendation? Please indicate yes by raising your hand.
Um, can we just restate the recommendation? Cause the number, I, whether it was going to be a million 78 or a million or-
Whatever everybody decides.
Yeah. Well, that, and we haven't-
We have a new number here, so.
Yeah, we haven't put a number in yet.
Don't exceed a million.
Yeah.
That's good.
So, so not to exceed one million?
One million?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. All those in favor, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Okay. Next up is personnel negotiation policy. Next up with two recommendations, the elementary and the second high school for the personnel report. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Lebowski.
Thank you. Pretty standard for this time of year. New hires, but also a lot of movement internally.
Any trustee questions? CNN, is there a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the personnel report? Elementary trustee, trustee Walsh, is there a second? Trustee Hayes, any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All elementary trustees in favor of approving the personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Is there a high school motion to approve the personnel report? Moved by trustee Wake, second by vice chair Walker Andrews. Any trustee comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for approving the high school personnel report, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is Missoula County Public Schools, Missoula Education Association negotiation update. And this is back to you, Mr. Lebowski.
Thank you. Yep. On July 2nd, we had our final negotiation session. We've reached a tentative agreement with MEA. And I thought, you know, since teachers are not here in the summer, they're not, they're not able to vote on the T-8 agreement. That'll happen in August. If that's successful, then the agreement will be brought to the board in September. But I thought I'd give you a few highlights, a few. If you want an in-depth review, I'm happy to, happy to meet with you. Lots of language items on top of, on top of financial items. So the first thing would be, the district has agreed to increase its contribution to insurance for all eligible employees by $25. That applies not only to MEA members, but all employees. In regards to the salary matrix, we took a similar approach that we did last year. If you recall, last year, we moved away from percentage increases to each cell and moved to whole dollar amounts for each cell. What this does is really attempt to lessen the, the difference between the lowest paid and the highest paid. Essentially, when you give a certain percentage to the lowest paid, it's a smaller amount of money than it is for the higher pay. So we went with, again, $2,100 this time for 25, 26 to each cell and then $2,100 next year for, for each cell. We also added a, a longevity stipend. So any teacher who's been in the district for 20 years will be paid an additional $750. At 25 years, it's an additional $1,000. And at 30 years, it's an additional $1,500 to help recognize the longevity of employees regardless of where they fall on the salary matrix. In regards to stipends and curriculum rates and, and all the extra contracts, those items have typically in the past been based upon a factor from the base salary, the lowest salary of the starting teacher. Because we've done so much work in raising that, that lower salary cell, we've negotiated that we apply a different number, which is 42,664. And that represents a roughly 4% increase from, from last year's amount that we used. Horizontal movement, so movement across the salary scale by education attainment. We're, we're limiting that to 15 employees moving multiple lanes in one year to 15 next year and then 12 the following year. Increased in personal leave from two days to three days. And we, I'm surprised we didn't have this in it before, but we worked out some language for dependent enrollment. So those employees with dependents in the district, working out an opportunity for them to have them in the building where they work or in the building nearest to where they work. So if you're a teacher at Hellgate, for example, and you're driving past Paxton every day, but you live out by Jeanette Rankin, if you would like your child in, in Paxton, you can, we can, we can get you there. So I think that's a, that's a win-win for, for everybody. And we also included some STARS language. And basically what that does is during the term of the contract, any cell that is below the minimum value required to comply with the STARS Act shall automatically be superseded by the minimum salary necessary under the STARS Act to maintain compliance. So that helps us keep the funding for the STARS Act. So all in all, I think it was a really productive session and I'll take any questions if you have them.
This is information only. Any questions from trustee? Trustee Mercer?
Where does it, do we estimate, so STARS is like starting at 65% going to 70 over five, where does this get us sitting in that scheme?
We, we get to roughly, I think 68%. We're pretty close. And that's obviously going to adjust each year as people retire or we hire new teachers. The uniqueness of Missoula is that the vast majority of our teachers exist at the top end of the pay scale. Much like, unlike other districts where there's a nice sort of spectrum of employees, we have everybody grouped up at the higher end. So it does, it does impact us when someone retires.
Any other questions from a trustee?
CNN, any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, next up are seller increases for non-union employees. And back to you, Mr. Lebowski.
Yeah, thank you. So now that MEA, we've reached a tentative agreement, we now look at the remaining groups of which the ones that are listed there represent well over 100 employees. And what we're asking for are whole dollar amounts to distribute essentially based on rough market analysis, I would say. So talking to other districts that have similar positions and, and to essentially not apply like we used to, a percentage to every employee equally. So we would look at the positions and see what the market analysis tells us and then apply the, the money as needed. But essentially this is an ask to give the remainder of the employees a raise.
Any questions? Trustee Mercer?
So I get what you just said about percentages, but as an overall, is it comparable? It's in the same levels of, the other one was around three-ish percent a year?
A little bit more than that, depending on where you are. It could range anywhere from four to 12. I mean, obviously if you're the starting teacher, that's been raised significantly. But this is definitely on par with, with the overall increase that our MMCEO and our MEA members have received.
Any other questions? This is a full board motion. Is there a motion from a trustee? Moved by trustee Walsh, second by vice chair Walker Andrews. Any final trustee comments? CNN, any public comment on this agenda item? CNN, all trustees in favor of approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is the uniform grievance, level four. The uniform grievance shall remain open to the public. The matter before the board is based on policy. The next item, oh. BIA, are you coming up to, or not until later? Okay. All right. Yep. You, as the individual who filed the grievance, you will go first in your presentation, go first in your presentation. And I did set a limit of 10 minutes per side. And so board members have seen your complaint. So this is a time for you to add any additional information you would like us to consider. Board members may then ask you questions. Then the administration will present its information and the board may ask them questions. After you both have presented, the board will deliberate and then vote on the issue. Do you have any questions? All right. Yep. Please, yep. Just the little, the little guy speaking. So, all right. You've got 10 minutes.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. My name is Beth Cole. I am a teacher at Hellgate High School. I was raised in Missoula, so I'm a product of these schools as well. I went to Lewson Clark and I went to Russell and I went to Roosevelt. You guys probably aren't familiar with Roosevelt. It's a, we sold it years ago. Went to Sentinel and then moved away for a long time, moved back and my children went to school in Missoula County Public Schools as well. So I'm deeply invested in Missoula County Public Schools. I have a long history. I really appreciate and congratulations on your new post. I really appreciate that you guys are taking time to hear me tonight. I have a packet for you guys that has some appendices that I'm going to reference that I'll give to Chair Old Person in, when I'm done with this. It's a little shocking, this packet costs $14 to, to print at Kinko's. And so when you see these packets, just appreciate how much the printing costs for the, for the schools. I'm sure Mike is very aware of all of our printing costs. As you know, I'm grieving Board Policy 2021. In some curricular areas, including the business content area, and that's what I teach, the administration is failing to conduct robust teacher-led curriculum reviews. Your teachers are your content specialists, particularly at a high school level. A robust curriculum review process ensures that industry and employment trends are reviewed and curriculum is developed to best meet the needs of students. The board packet provided for you contains some factual errors, misrepresentations and character impugning language. I think you should carefully consider what the district is attempting to do here. You probably note that not many grievances make it to you. This is likely due to the fact that teachers don't want to risk retaliation and are hesitant to endure negative characterization similar to what the district is putting forward about me. I was warned about how brutal this process can be by my, by my union and they were right. Within a day of, a day or two of any of the actions of this grievance, I was called in for disciplinary meetings and ultimately written up. This is the first time in my teaching career and in the expanse of my work life that I have ever been written up. The district claims that I did not grieve this action, which is not true. I submitted a written response to Mr. Lebowski asking for redress, which was also denied. I've included my response in the packet as well. I'm accused of discussing this process with my department chair, which I believed was appropriate. I am a dedicated teacher who has served the district for 20 years. I care deeply about my students and my colleagues. I believe that one of the ways you show teachers they are valued is to honor their expertise and include them in developing the content that they teach. It's imperative that the board and the district create a strong professional environment to capitalize on teaching strength. Talented teachers are leaving MCPS. The district still has many unfulfilled positions. Retention should be one of your top priorities. The materials you were provided referenced my original grievance that was more expansive than what I'm bringing to you today, but I feel that I need to address some of those because there is a lot of disparaging reference about me in those. The original grievance-
Sorry. You can't, you're not allowed to do that in this part of it.
Okay. But you guys received a, a policy packet, a board packet that included, BIA opened the door to that by referencing in the board packet, the previous grievance items in it.
So I, I referenced that this was a much broader grievance than was originally filed. What was filed with the board is limited to a policy 2120. We did not provide the entire grievance packet.
But you referenced multiple areas of the original grievance, including the, the information about Mr. Miller and things like that.
What I said was it started out as a much broader grievance that has been narrowed. I, we did not, they have not reviewed the original grievance. We're not talking about the original grievance and that you haven't appealed it. So.
But that is part of the, the packet that they received is a pretty extensive conversation about it.
It's actually not. What they received was specifically 2120, your complaint under 2120, the policy itself, and each administrator's response to the 2120. That's it. That's all I provided.
Well, in the history, in the background, you do discuss that, and reference that I'm, I'm likely disgruntled employee and that I've made these, these claims. I mean, we could, we could read them again.
It's limited to, if you want to spend your time, then we can spend time talking about it.
Okay. Okay. I will, I think it's important to just understand that the information and the history and that is not entirely accurate. So I'll move on. I'll address the actual grievance that is in front of you regarding the curriculum process. The district asserts that the media arts courses, I teach media arts at Hellgate High School, and the media arts pathway has been completely eliminated. It's been taken out and new courses for social media production have been added in their place. The district asserts that the media art courses have experienced significant declines in student participation, including some- including some classes having as few as two students in, in the packet here. In reality, the eliminated media pathway courses had sufficient student requests to continue. In twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, the AV pathway classes, which the ones I'm talking about garnered two-hundred-and-eighty-one student requests. The new social media production course that replaced these garnered sixty-eight student requests during the same period. Mr. Miller, the principal at Hellgate High School, eliminated the media arts classes while assigning six teaching periods to the social media classes for next year. This means with current requests, each social media production class will have approximately eleven students in each one of the classes. Regarding the claim that some classes have two students, high schools use an independent study model to provide flexibility for students. These independent study classes allow students to pursue areas of interest outside the normal class scheduling process. An independent study class will likely have one or two students, but is not included in the assigned schedule. So high school teachers typically teach five out of seven periods, but the teachers will also take on a number of independent study students. So it will look like a high school teacher has one or two students in a class, but that's outside, they take that on outside of their contract for the benefit of the student. These independent study offers are in addition to the normal teaching schedule to help students explore interests and address scheduling conflicts. I typically offer numerous independent study opportunities for students who have taken all available media arts courses and want to continue their study in high school. I've included two separate articles from my former students who have gone on to become successful filmmakers. Both completed the AV pathway and took independent study classes to augment their learning and both credit Hellgate Media Arts Program in, for their start in the program and they, in the press that they've done around the movies that they've done, they specifically mentioned the Hellgate Media Arts Program. I'm, I'm super proud of that. The AV pathway, and I've included the pathway to, also generated additional funding through the Perkins Grant. Eliminating these clients, these classes and the subsequent pathway results in less funding for MCPS. OPI has identified no pathways for new social media production classes. The district asserts in your board packet that OPI is changing this process, but until those changes take effect, MCPS has chosen to forego funding through this AV pathway. I believe the media arts pathway holds a lot of value for students of Hellgate and more largely Missoula County Public Schools. In removing the AV pathway, the, the district is ignoring a significant opportunity afforded to students through new legislation. Through Senate Bill three-twenty-six, it's a media act film tax credit. And I've included that and the resulting, resulting creation of a forty-seven acre film production studio in Missoula. Film and media arts jobs are coming to Missoula. It appears the administration and the teachers they claim to consult didn't take any of these recent industry changes into account. Removing classes at MCPS that support an emerging, emerging industry in Missoula is misguided. The materials provided assert that input was sought from Hellgate Business Department Chair Beth Huggett, yet she maintained in conversations with me that she was never consulted. Each member of my department has a unique set of skills that help students find success in high school. Prior to becoming a teacher, I was an advertising executive on the Mazda Motor of America account and I was responsible for a two-hundred-million-dollar advertising budget. I've taught media art classes at MCPS for the last twenty years. No one else in the department has a similar background experience, yet according to the district, I was the one person in the department who was excluded from any of the conversations on changing the classes. In reviewing the MCPS website under curriculum review cycle, and it's in the appendix, CTA was supposed to be, CTE, that's curriculum, or the business classes that I'm part of, was supposed to be reviewed in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. It's not been reviewed and approved by you since two thousand and eleven. The district completed an audit in two thousand and seventeen and they determined priority standards in two thousand and eighteen. Curriculum was not developed in either of those events. The district claims it will conduct a curriculum review in two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, but typically the process is started during the spring prior to the start of the review cycle so the district can solicit interest from teachers in the district. This has yet to happen. So curriculum is being developed by administration because they want the flexibility, but teachers are largely being left out of the, the process and it, we want to be part of the process. I'm happy to-
Your ten minutes is up.
Okay.
All right. So are there any questions from any trustees? Trustee Mercer.
So this is the time, or do we, right now, okay, so what is the actual grievance? I heard you say that you disagreed with the decision. I guess I will forecast that, I'm not sure the outcome of the decision is grievable because the policy doesn't dictate one outcome or the other. What is the grievance that you were not involved in the decision-making, that there was no curriculum? Like what is the actual grievable policy violation?
The actual grievable, grievable policy violation is that curriculum is supposed to be reviewed in a, and presented to you guys for approval by teachers in a prescribed period of time, and that's not happening.
Any other trustees have a question?
A brief question.
Certainly.
Looking at the, the materials, I'm not sure exactly when you were talking or when someone else is talking, but the way that I read the, the policy, it says the teaching staff has a significant responsibility in the development of curricula and the primary responsibility for the implementation or the teaching. Significant isn't the same as the-
No, I understand that.
Or the primary. So that was my question is, is how far-reaching are you trying to say that the teaching staff's responsibility is for the development of curricula?
I'm actually going back to our old practice. And so when we did the curriculum review in Teth at two thousand and eleven, the district pulls together the consortium of schools that feed into Missoula County Public Schools and all the teachers in a content area. They review industry standards. They look at trends, economic trends, and then they develop curriculum based on that information that's going to best meet the needs of students. That's not happening. And so, and then they come together with administration. So administration is part of that too, but teachers are a significant part of that. We develop recommendations that come to the board and then you approve curriculum that's supposed to be taught in the schools. So in the absence of doing that curriculum review, which is what I'm grieving, is the absence of doing that robust curriculum review where you're including all of the stakeholders in that process, that it's in violation of that policy. Is that clear about that? All right.
So you're not objecting necessarily to teaching a particular class, but that the review didn't happen? And you indicated that the review was supposed to happen in twenty-twenty-one, which if I'm not wrong, was in the middle of COVID. So I'm not sure any curriculum review, I mean, I don't know, occurred during that year.
Well, if you followed the normal cycle that we used to follow, the curriculum review cycle would have happened in two thousand and sixteen because typically we reviewed the curriculum every five years. And so the, the last time it's been approved was two thousand and eleven. So if we were following a curriculum review cycle that we used to follow in the past, it would have been two thousand and sixteen. I was going off the document that's on the website over the curriculum review cycle of, and the document has not been updated. So I'm going on, based on what the document on the website says.
Trustee Mercer.
I guess, what is your, what's your remedy? So let's say that's, we agree that the curriculum hasn't been reviewed back in two thousand and sixteen when it was supposed to. I heard you say, and I assume the administration will say that they intend to review it next year. So what's the remedy right now? I mean, in some ways, the most obvious would be like, well, then we can't teach anything because we don't have a reviewed curriculum. What, and then I think the superintendent would say, well, then we're going to do a pilot project for this year and we'll review curriculum next year. Do you have some remedy other than reviewing curriculum next year that you're asking for?
I, I feel, and I understand Superintendent Hill's position that the pilot process allows for some flexibility with administration, but I feel that the pilot process is being overused and that it's subverting a lot of teacher input in the process. So I guess largely I wanted to bring this to your attention. I am saddened that the media arts program is going, has gone away because I think with the changes that are happening locally, that there's a lot of benefit to students to have that. So I would like to prevent another situation like has just happened where an important program that's going to feed, or it's going to provide jobs for our local kids in this economy, that we're no longer supporting that as a school district. So I would like to see, I guess, as a remedy, that that not happen in the future.
Any other trustee questions? CNN, thank you. Next, we can have Ms., Mrs. Kaliva. You may present for the administration. And you will also have ten minutes and we'll start those as soon as you are ready.
Okay, you can start. Thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate it. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the administration's response to the complaints. Sorry, I'm short. That have, that was filed with regard to the following of policy twenty-one twenty. Again, initially, this started out as a much larger complaint. It's narrowed down to the issue of whether the district is following policy twenty-one twenty. And I think you heard enough from Ms. Cole's presentation to understand that this has become personal to her and she believes that her courses should be maintained because she doesn't feel that the administration takes enough, what she called in her complaint, appropriate teacher comment. But the reality is, and this was bared out through the entirety of the investigation, starting with Mrs. Shattuck and moving to Superintendent Hill, that members of her department were consulted. There were discussions within that department at Hellgate. And overwhelmingly, the, the response was not as Mrs. Cole has, or Ms. Cole has represented to you. Staff was given input. And if you look at the numbers and, and we're, if we're honest about them, the classes that, that Mrs. Cole's asking to, to have remain in the district did not garner the number of student interest in order to maintain them. And if we're looking at trying to get as much for our money as humanly possible, having classes that have three, four, or five kids in them isn't a cost-efficient way to run a particular school. So for example, in twenty-four, twenty-five, first semester of graphic design, twelve students started, five dropped, leaving seven total in the class that semester. In film one, thirteen students started, two dropped, leaving eleven students in that class. And those are not independent study courses. In twenty-three, twenty-four, first semester of graphic design, five students signed up, two dropped, leaving three in that class. Again, that is not an efficient manner in which to run a high school and we don't live in an environment anymore where we can have courses that have that few students and hope to sustain a department, particularly we're being required by the state now to teach financial literacy. When you look at the input that was sought, and you're going to hear from Mrs. Shattuck here in a second, but staff were consulted. The chair of the department did provide input to Superintendent Hill. There were discussions in department meetings and Ms. Cole's dissatisfaction with the direction was well noted. With regard to the, the claiming of retaliation that was in her complaint, the only retaliation the district has record of is hers. Following the decision, or following the decision from Mrs. Shattuck at that level two, Mrs. Cole chose to approach a staff member to the point that the staff member came to administration and said she felt intimidated and as if she was being interrogated about what level of participation she had in that investigation. That is specifically prohibited under policy seventeen hundred. Staff members should feel free to participate in investigations without fear of anyone taking any kind of adverse action against them or attempting to intimidate them. That was the only reason for admin discussing this issue with her. The district remains committed to providing the best education for students that we can provide while meeting accreditation standards. And yes, the curriculum review cycle is starting this year for that, and this is a pilot program. Policy twenty-three eleven specifically permits that. And I'm going to ask right now for Mrs. Shattuck just to tell you briefly about what she discovered when she did the initial investigation.
All right. So just one clarification there, Bea. We were in, in discussions with OPI. Because of the changes that are happening with the pathways for CTE, they suggested we wait and wait until they have figured out their pathways before we do a complete curriculum review. So more than likely, next year it will look like an audit on our programming throughout the district. Just a clarification. So each year, Principal Miller and his admin team, along with Sentinel's principal and admin team, Big Sky's principal and admin team, and their department chairs really look at the numbers. They engage in a process of reviewing enrollment, class enrollment, student demand and requests because each year students go through the process of requesting courses. And graduation requirements, this, this class that's going to be graduating next year will be the first class that has the financial literacy requirement. And so that, that was a big piece that had to be added somewhere and it was added into the business department. So they take all that information and use it to determine what's going to be offered in each of the subject areas. So the creation of any new course really is under the purview of a, of a principal. And are, are often in response to student requests or budget. As you'll recall last year, some of you, that we had some major cuts. And, and I asked each principal to go back and look at your master schedule, look at your class enrollment and how many kids are in each class each semester and determine what's the most efficient programming you can do in your building. So they were all tasked with doing that. One of the things that, that I think is also important to know is that this, this course that's going to be offered called Social Media Design and Production is being created right now in, by a teacher in collaboration with the department leader and so, and with administration. So they're working through the summer to create this course. Right now, there's three sections and a hundred and twenty kids signed up. So I think it's a pretty popular thing. Micah always says, kids talk with their feet and kids sign up for things that interest them. Britt Hanford, who is an assistant principal there, she has done a ton of research on just current trend, business trends and so forth. And we all know social media is, is something that is incorporated throughout the business community. And, and, and part of the, the social media isn't just about going on Instagram. It's about podcast production. It's about communication through social media. It's about design. So trying to grab interest for kids was really a big determine, determining factor along with those lower class numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Just in summary, I, I think that it's clear there's some dissatisfaction with an individual staff member in, in the direction that the district is taking or that the administration is taking. But I think it's, it's important to recognize when you look carefully at the documents, this isn't a violation of board policy. This is a philosophical difference within a building. And the, the building will follow the appropriate process to determine if this course is going to be added. For example, as a permanent course, it'll come to the board and there'll be more discussion and staff members will have another opportunity at that time to bring their concerns to the board about where they think it's an appropriate way to go. And with regard to curriculum development and the, and the way it was done in the past, that's not required by board policy. Districts evolve how they develop curriculum and bring it to the board based on a number of different factors, including how everyone evolved after COVID. That is not unique to MCPS. That is pretty much across the state. But the district administration remains committed to- But the district administration remains committed to involving teachers and recognizing that they are a significant part of curriculum development. And in this case, there were teachers discuss, or that met with administration and their department chair, and this is the path they have chosen to go, and we'd ask that the board uphold it.
All right. Thank you. Now we discuss as a board whether or not we believe that there is a merit to this complaint.
Wilena, I think if there's a question.
Oh. Yes, you get 10 minutes, or you get questions, my bad.
I get 10 minutes, perfect.
Or no, not.
In Policy 2120, there's this, these materials shall be reviewed at least every five years. Reviewed by who? Is that board review, or is that?
No, it's district review.
It's just district review?
Yes.
And so the requirement here is not for the board to review it at any given time, but just that the board must, is responsible for the curriculum adoption and must approve all significant changes? So a static curriculum would not need board action on any timeline, is that?
Correct.
Okay. But everyone agrees that, including new courses, that this new course, not this coming year, but the year after that, if it were to continue, would require board curriculum adoption.
Absolutely.
That's agreed on by everyone?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
I'm not sure who the best person, maybe Amy, to answer this question. How often do we introduce brand new courses?
All the time.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah. It really is in response to student interest and getting as many kids interested in your course as possible. So they take all the information, look at it, and see what program they will have per subject.
I mean, the reason I ask is I don't ever remember approving, say, a new course in Vietnamese history or something. That's why I'm asking. You know, I don't think I've ever seen one.
Can I comment?
Absolutely.
Sometimes I think it's helpful, especially for kind of framing it up. But right now, we have a curriculum review going on for health enhancement. You heard a presentation, you heard about the staff involvement. There is a kiosk set up in our office for anybody in the public to come and view and review and give input, and there's going to be an approval process. Curriculum is really about state standards. Courses is the vehicle by which you deliver the curriculum. A course, and I like to use science as a great example, biology, there are lots of different biological courses to introduce and teach the same standards. And so I think that's a big differentiation. When we talk about, are we approving new courses every year? The answer is generally no. We didn't do it in my first two years, and this is the first time that we really become aware of the issue. I think back to 2011 or 2016, how many times the administration has changed, all the different things. I think actually the policy in and of itself was written at a time when it was required by state law for boards to approve courses, but it is not in state law now.
Correct. You guys use an old MTSBA template. It's not required, but in discussions with the administration, I think that there is, there's significant interest in having more discussion up at the board level.
Yeah, I mean, for example, we've talked about, well, maybe what we should do is bring every single course, EL through 12th grade, and you guys can review it every single year and approve the list of courses. It would get a little old and tedious. We have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of courses. But what we could do is say, here's what we have existing. Here are the new courses being introduced and have an opportunity for the board to see what is being introduced. And most often, it is, it is being generated by our teaching staff. It is not us going and saying, we need to create this new course. But it's usually in response to something. One of the things as a high school principal for a number of years that I, in running master schedules, that I would talk about with our department leaders, kids talk with their feet, and if they're, the pie is only so big. And so you're trying to do something that's going to innovate and create and draw attention to a course or a career pathway. You're trying to meet a lot of different needs within that. And so I think that's the challenge of staying relevant in a time when kids have the option to do a lot of different things besides just attending public high schools. There's a lot of other options. There's options through colleges, there's options online, there's all sorts of things. And so we're competing with everybody for that same interest.
And this particular course is a pilot specifically under Policy 2311.
Trustee Mercer.
So I hear what you're saying about law may not require, statute might not require new courses, but the current policy does. And separate from whether I would be in favor of changing that, I mean, you're not, any new course that's more than a year has to come to us. Am I missing something?
That is essentially what the policy is saying.
And is that what we're doing?
You tell me. You've been on the board longer than I have, than I've been a superintendent here. Have you ever approved a, and that's part of, like, that's part of the discussion, I think, for the whole board, is you have something that's written, and I think it's a, it's a standard by which you could say, yes, we're trying to do that. But every five years? That means we would have to wait every five years to introduce a new course?
Well, and again, I heard council say that the five year was for review, and so you guys can review them. But the policy is super clear that all significant changes, including new courses, must be approved and adopted before such changes are made, subject to the 2311. So that's why we're saying, like, at the two-year point. If that's not happening, we should fix it, either by fixing the rule or fixing the practice. I still don't know what that means for a grievance here, though, right? Like, and I don't know, so it might be that the current courses that are all being taught should have been adopted five years ago, but I don't know what the remedy of that is right now. And, but it is a concern. And then I, well, I, okay, I'll leave it at that, I guess.
So I think, Trustee Mercer, I can answer that. I'm probably the last, oldest person standing here. I've been with you guys for 25, almost 30 years, actually. But historically, your district adopted this MTSBA template years ago and has never followed it. One of the things that this process brought up was, is that, and we had this lengthy conversation, is, is this truly a pilot course? And then if so, it falls squarely under 2311. If the recommendation is to go forward, and if this policy still exists, it has to come to the board for approval. It has to. And that's got to be the mechanism that the district, the administration follows if the board stays with this policy. The law changed years ago, and for whatever reason, the board never changed their policy. So that'll be a discussion you guys have over the course of this year. But for this particular grievance, there isn't a violation of policy because it is a pilot course.
Trustee Mercer.
And then in the pilot course section, I didn't see any requirements in policy there about the amount of review or, and so taken as true, just, and I know it's not your guys' position, but that there was no teacher input at all, and that might be a good or bad idea, but I don't read it as a violation of this policy that just simply says a superintendent could have a policy project. Is that?
That, yeah. If you take it as true that there was absolutely zero teacher input, it still wouldn't violate Policy 2120, which is, which falls under 2311 as far as the pilot course. But that wasn't, that isn't our position.
Trustee Walsh.
So the language says materials must be reviewed at least every five years, but not curriculum, because you might repackage. It sounds like this course is a little bit of a repackaging of other courses to make it more appealing. And I, so, and it doesn't say that the materials have to be reviewed by the board. And the where, because it's separate from the curriculum piece. So it doesn't seem to me that, that this policy was broken, but it does seem like a nice chance to check in and maybe look at that policy together.
Sure.
In the near future.
Trustee Mercer.
And just related to that, since there's always this, in my mind, there's been a tension between materials and textbooks, and they get treated differently. And in this modern world, that distinction might not be what it once was.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
I just wanted to say, it says five years or in a manner consistent with, which is OPI or somebody, not us. So it's pretty big.
Well, and again, I heard the answer on the five years. That is not being interpreted by our councils being the board.
It's not the board.
It's reviewed by the district, which could be, at whatever level, the superintendent sets that review, so.
Trustee Hayes.
So could I make a motion that we review this policy so that we can get more clarity in it?
Outside of this, yes, you can.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you can assume that these policies, and there were several that we discovered in your 2000 section that just need to be updated because the law has changed.
Is that it for questions for the administration? All right. So now, now we discuss as a board whether or not we believe that this is merit to this complaint, that there is merit to this complaint. Trustee Walsh.
Well, I think there's merit in the sense that we need to clean up our policy language and maybe processes. And I think it's a, we can all hear that, okay, we need to do that a little better. But it doesn't seem to me that the, the policy that we've, that it's been broken. How do you say that? The policy's been violated? Oh, that's, that's the word, yeah.
Trustee Mercer.
So I'm, I don't think there's a violation of policy that's grievable. But I want to say very clearly, just for myself, that although both sides talked about the merits of this course versus another course, I really do not think that is before me, or frankly, before the board right now. I think the question is whether the process has been violated. And I guess I appreciate the teacher and the, and the principals and everyone's take and passion for providing the best education. I really, I'm going to vote that there's not a violation here, but I don't say that is an up or down on whether the merits of this particular course. I just don't think that's in front of us right now. That would be in front of us if we were doing a curriculum review and a course review, and we were being actively adopted. We're not being asked to do that right now, in my opinion, so.
Any other trustee? I will entertain a motion. Either we move to reject their grievance, or we move to accept their grievance. Trustee Wake. Can you turn your mic on for that, please?
I move that we reject the grievance. Is that right?
Is there a second? Second by Trustee Mercer. Any final comments? Trustee Walsh.
Are we allowed to say, like, we reject it, but we amend to get better? Or like, work on the policy? Like, it's such a valid complaint, and I think we can all take it as a moment to reflect on, okay, we got to tighten up our adherence to our own policies, like, when it comes to curriculum review? Is there a way we can, like, add that in? Or it's just up or down? Okay, just up or down, okay.
Trustee Mercer.
Well, I also think there's probably, like, some notice things what we can do. I think the message has been gotten across that these need review. I think that's not missed by anyone. But I think the grievance is very technical. It's, in my opinion, you can't grieve whether something was a good decision or not. You just can grieve where policy is violated. And the policy, as I read it, says the super, so I think the only way you could, I think the only way you could favor this violation is if you were to say that this is not a pilot project and therefore was not within the superintendent's one-year pilot project review. If you believed that, then it should come before us. In favor of the interpretation that the one year gives the superintendent this thing, this is being developed right now, you would make a, if you interpreted the policy that every single, you don't have that one-year guidance, you would, you would have troubles. Right? And so it makes a lot of sense to say the superintendent has one year to build a pilot that then can be brought to us for, in a more mature form, when we actually go to adopt it. So I guess for me, the interpretation that this fits within the one year makes sense and fits with the plain language, and so I'm.
Any other final comments? I think one of the things we've all, as trustees, recognized was that we do need to clean up some stuff. But I think some of the board that's been on here, we've been on here during the pandemic. But I think with the new software that we've had, that Superintendent Hill and Tracy have brought forward to the board for us to really use electronic, has really helped us look at our policies a lot better, too. So I'm excited for that part. But I'll go ahead and move forward. I just want to thank Beth for coming forward and talking to us about her grievance and know that you have been heard. And we'll go ahead and move forward with the vote. So all those in favor for the motion on the table to reject the grievance, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Thank you very much. All right. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none? All right. So now it is 7:45, and we will move into executive session. Yep, and then five minutes while we let MCAT and then everybody else clear. But yeah, we'll start executive session at 7:00.